I'm calling this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. Chief Portillo, good to have you. Good to have the press here with us tonight. And everybody else, welcome. The first item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Do any of the councilors want to make changes?
No changes.
No changes. And the next item is council comments. First on the list is Councilor Bedison.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So I first want to compliment the Territorial Charter Day Committee for an incredible job. From Dr. Montoya's talk to Danny Cordova, who has a guitar, to the Brulese baseball and everything in between, all the way to the Territorial Charter Ball was just, it was really an incredible day. Plus, I noticed, like most of you, about how many people were downtown. Because there's no return. It was a good weekend in terms of that. So I really appreciate it. And I want to suggest to the Territorial Charter Committee that they consider making Brulese baseball a permanent event. Because it was fun. It was cold, but it was fun to watch and it was fun to join in.
It has been done.
It has been done. That's great. Because it was, it was, it was great the way the crowd participated by calling balls and strikes and fouls and everything. And I thought that was just like going to a real game, you know, or, you know, any game anywhere else. We just wanted to make sure everybody was on track. Don't run, things like that. So, um, so I was contacted by Commissioner Alicia Edwards to say that someone had emailed me multiple times and I had not received the email. I cannot understand why my email will not, I mean, I don't even get it in spam. I don't get it in quarantine. I literally don't get certain addresses. So I would like, and I would hope the press would put that in, put this next thing in there. If you're going to email me, please add the town clerk's email address. Because that will ensure, because she will forward them to me. Because I don't know what's going on with my council address. It's like, some people get through and other people, it just goes to somewhere in the ether. And if you don't get an answer from me, it's not that I'm ignoring you, it's that I haven't received it. Please call the message phone by my name that's at the town, on the town's website. It's 575-597-7031. I tested it out last night and I got the message. So it's working. So please don't give up. I just don't want people to think I'm ignoring them. I'm not. And I hear you. And I may not reply if it's something that is currently in a legal process that I shouldn't comment on. So there was several emails about something that I know according to what I've read from various people that is in a particular process. And council members really can't interfere with that process. That is something that Mr. Scavron takes care of or has designated. And the last thing I want to say is I apologize to all my constituents for not getting out there in Lockland. It's been too cold. I've had, unfortunately, a lot of travel to do. And in the meantime, there's been other circumstances that have occurred that's made it so I'm unable to visit with all of you and to talk with all of you. So I will do it when it gets a little bit warmer. I will make sure that you all, you know, have everything about how to get in contact with me, that I meet with you personally. I'm sorry that I couldn't do it before and I know that the election is next week. So I would encourage you, I know that, I've had many of my constituents say, but all you need is one vote. And said, well, one of the things about this process is you can go and say you're going to vote and then you can vote the way you want to or not vote the way you want to on this election. So as something that is a right in the United States to vote, I would hope that you would go and vote, whether it's early voting, and I know that the town clerk will explain what that is, or whether it's on Election Day, if you live, which is March 3rd, Tuesday, March 3rd, right? Am I right? Did I say the wrong date? Okay. Sorry, I'm just scrambled today. So if you live in Council Districts 1 or 3, I know there's no opposition, but you still make the choice when you go to vote. So you don't have to fill in a circle if you don't want to. I mean, I just think it's important for people to know that, I would hope they would still exercise their right to vote. So that's all, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman comments?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would echo the statements about Territorial Charter Day. It was a fabulous event. Everyone worked really hard on it and it was obvious they worked really hard on it. So thanks to the museum staff, too. They seem to be working very well together and it's pretty obvious and it's pretty impressive, actually. I want to go far back than that, actually, since we haven't been here for a full month, and thank the Grant County Prospectors, including Councilor Bedison, for the tremendous amount of work that they put into Grant County Day at the Legislature. It's, for anyone who has never been, I invite you all to come, because it is amazing to see how well-represented Grant County is at the Legislature and how well-respected the Prospectors are because of all the work that they put into it. And the legislators really do, and the Cabinet Secretaries really do listen to what the Prospectors have to say. And because of that, we've gotten a lot of capital out there this year and other years in the past, and it's very much appreciated, all the work that you do.
Thanks.
At Territorial Charter Day, I met two amazing young ladies that we'll be hearing from a little bit later on in the meeting, who are going to be speaking to us about a project that they're working on. But they were actually up there with their school, Alderweeple High School, and they were lobbying. And they were lobbying better than most adults do. It was impressive to see that group of students. And this is the first year that they've done, they've done this several years in a row. And watching them lobby made me think about what Council Ray was saying at the last meeting, that we need to get youth a little bit more engaged. So they're going to do a presentation this evening and hopefully maybe that'll get some people that watch Cats to know more about what they're doing and also might encourage some other young people to come give presentations here. I know there's a lot of them that are working on National History Day right now, so maybe some of them will find some kind of a connection between us and History Day and come and share their stuff, too.
Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I wrote an article in the paper here a couple of days ago about bicycle lanes. I agree with them, but on the same token, there are many streets that don't have a five-foot free zone. And it works both ways. They have to respect the vehicles also, just like we have to respect the bike people also. I would like to see, when we do our bicycle lanes here in Silver again, if it's possible, Mr. Brown, to paint a different color on the bike lanes, maybe a yellow on both sides to make sure that they stay between those boundaries, or green, and then...
I think it depends. If we're using federal or state money, that they have certain requirements that we have to meet. Only if we use our own funds that we choose exactly what we're going to do. But if it's state or federal money, we have to use the specifications that they require.
Okay. Well, thank you. But I would also say it would be some sort of a safety order for the people also. And also, Senator Bill Number Five, I am totally against it. Once we lose a little part of anything that is ours to own guns, what's, they can take away the whole thing away. I hope that the people will respond to that, as from what I understood, it's going to go before the Supreme Court now to see if they're going to take it back again. I am against it. I don't, they're punishing the wrong people. We, as hunters and as fishermen, outdoors people, we have respect for the law. We have respect for our own guns. So don't, don't prey on us. I am tired of hearing all this democratic thing about the presidential candidate. In America, they spend so much money trying to get rid of Trump and all that money that has been put to use for public, for roads, for anything. And I'm tired of it. Let's keep it to a minimum. We don't need to start cutting down each other. Now, I'll talk about the 2020 census. This is just my opinion. I don't believe in it. I don't like it. And I won't participate in it. That is my right, that is my right to say that I don't want to give information to the government. If it's all about money, then we're doing the wrong thing. And I know people don't like it, but that's my, my opinion on that. If they want information about me, about any of us, any of us here, we can go downtown. We all pay bills. We all live in the same place for many, many years. So why do they need more information? One more thing on early education. I think it's a wrong thing to do to kids. You need to have kids be kids. And you have to have a parent be parent. Let them take care of the kids. The teachers are not parents. You will see some of the stuff that the teacher go through. Wiping babies. Parents send them sick. They send them dirty. And they expect the teachers to do that? That's a no-no. I understand that also, that there are parents that need to work, both parents need to work. I understand that. But if you're going to do that for early education, well, then help them out. Help the teachers out. Okay, now, this is happening with America, okay? They give a lot of credit to Kobe Bryant. Why? Why not give it to the veterans? The veterans that put their lives out there. I know you don't like my comment, ma'am, but it's okay. The veterans are the ones that need to have recognition, not Kobe Bryant. I'm sorry that he died. I'm sorry that his daughter died. But once is enough. Not over and over and over again. I know the veterans, they're the ones that give everybody the right to do things here. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ray. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two really brief comments. One is that I want to follow up a little bit on what, sort of by councilors, other colleagues here I've referred to. And I have been approached by people this week, gotten phone messages from people this week, wanting me to actually intervene in town management decisions. That's not my role. So I am just referring people back. If they have questions about planning and zoning, they should contact the Community Development Department. If they have questions about town policies in terms of water rates and stuff, they should contact the town manager. And just yesterday, I got called by a person who was very upset about what I think was probably a code enforcement issue in her neighborhood. But a code enforcement is, please call Central Dispatch and file a report and they will follow up. We have a code enforcement officer who is really on it, conscientious and community-facing. So I'm just going to say, the Central Dispatch number is 388-8840. Please call them. And if you have questions about some construction or something going on in your neighborhood and have a question about that, whether or not it's been fully inspected, please call the Community Development Department at 534-6348. I am not going to be an advocate for a particular person's point of view and get between the town management and that person. So that's my statement for the evening.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Councilor Bedison?
I just kind of want to reiterate what I said earlier. If, if something is in a legal process, it is not for the council to step in. That's handled by the town. If you have any questions, you can contact the town manager. You can contact other folks, but it is not appropriate as a council member to, as Councilwoman Smith said, to decide what to do. We, we stay out of that. We're, we're actually the legislative branch, the council is, and the councilors. The legislative branch is, is what we do. We do not, we have a town manager who is someone that has worked for us for a number of years, and he's the one who manages the staff. So if there's ever any question where you want to get direct answers to the best of his ability, please contact Alex Brown. He, it's just like, let me say, for instance, at the university, there's a Board of Regents, and then there's the president. The Board of Regents is the one who hired the university president. So the Board of Regents steps back and lets the president manage the university and staff through various avenues, directors, vice presidents, things like that. And that's the same sort of mechanism that works at the town level, especially in Silver City, because we are a manager, mayor, council for a government. So I'd be happy to talk to you about how our government works, but it's, it's not appropriate to interfere in a process that is ongoing in any way or that is under the purview of the manager. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? I just have a few. I'd like to thank the council for the hard work they do. And believe me, when you look at behind the scenes and all the things that council members do, whether it's traveling to meetings, it's in meetings, it's meeting with community members, because they're the interface between the general public and the, and the town. I also want to thank the general public. One of the great things about our community is the volunteers, whether it's the Territorial Charter, whether it's the Hila, Tour of the Hila, or Art events, or whatever it is. The only thing that makes those successful are the hundreds and hundreds of people that just jump right in and get it done, and many times at no small sacrifice. And then the community organizations. I don't want to name any, but many community organizations are doing tremendous things, whether it's scholarships for students or whatever the case may be. And then, last but not least, I don't know if you've had a chance to see the Downtown Plaza yet, the Main Street Plaza. But if you haven't, take a walk downtown and, and turn in by the Adobe Springs and you'll enter a heavenly place. It's just wonderful. They've done a good job and, and the Main Street Executive Director, Shomi Wade, has really provided great leadership to make that happen. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the January 23, 2020 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion? Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the town of Silver City of January 23, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Next item is public input. I see that one person has signed up, Christine Wolford. If you'll come to the microphone and push that little button there and speak directly into the microphone so we can hear you.
Hi, Christina Wolford. I'm Executive Director of Supporting People in Need. And I just wanted to thank the city for partnering with us this cold weather season for the cold weather shelter. We have averaged about 14 people a night, about 10 men, three women, and two transgender in our shelter all season long. But the weather's warming up and it's about time to wind it down, so it's time to start planning for next year and how we're going to keep people from freezing next year. I would just like to also remind City Council, as you're preparing to work on your budget for next year, that homelessness is not just a spin problem or a human problem, but it's also a town problem. And that the town has addressed it repeatedly in the comprehensive plan, that, that it's an issue that the town will partner with organizations to work on. I have some materials about homelessness that I'll leave on my card if anybody has any other questions. But we're really excited about the future and we look forward to partnering again.
Thank you. I think next on the agenda is reports, and I think we have two people that will be given a report. Could you come up to the microphone and turn it on and speak directly into the microphone and give us your report? And do we have the two people that were going to make a report? Oh, okay. Tell us who you are.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us tonight. We're seniors from Alderweeple Charter School. I'm Kenny Lakey.
And I'm Angela Claussen. And together, we started the Yellow Rose Project. It is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that spreads awareness on how few eligible voters exercise a right that minorities and women fought for for centuries. In celebration of the 100th year anniversary of women's suffrage, we use the yellow rose as a symbol of our organization to pay homage to the women and their allied senators who supported national women's suffrage at the 1919 Tennessee Convention. At this monumentous convention, anti-suffragists wore red roses to show their opposition to the 19th Amendment. The yellow rose marks the end of a 72-year battle and the blossoming of a new era. However, 100 years after the ratification of the 19th Amendment, younger generations have an apathetic voter turnout. With only 30% of eligible Gen Z voters going to the polls, the voice of young voters is effectively back-run noise in comparison to their generational counterparts. We have designed a selection of stickers we will be selling and distributing nationwide. We hope to encourage our generation to use their voice at the polls and use the profit generated from sticker sales to help the voiceless. We will be donating 100% of the profits to Silver Regional Sexual Assault Support Services, a nonprofit organization that provides emergency care and legal advocacy to sexual assault victims here in Silver City. We've also partnered with two local businesses, Power and Light Press and J&amp;J Signs, to produce our product. The merchandise has yet to be released, but if you visit our website at www.yellowrosproject.org, you can learn more about our goals and how you can help us launch our movement. I also have a bag that has the stickers that we'll be releasing soon on our website and also starting to distribute. And I have three or four cards in here also, that has an email that you can email us with any questions. And it also has our website on it. So can I...
Any questions or comments? Councilor Bedison?
I just want to say thank you. That was an excellent presentation. And like Councilor Conno, I had the opportunity to meet you at the Prospectors' event. And I am very glad that you are doing this project, because you could hear me talk about still exercise your right to vote, even if there isn't any opposition. So, and I also, hopefully we'll do it in March, about what they have, they're, we're working on at WNMU in a celebration of 100 years of women's right to vote. So, and I encourage you to, when we, when the committee does put out that information, that, that both of you and anyone else will join us for that event. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Next is staff reports. Mr. Brown, the first thing I had was a report by Ms. Mackey.
Yes, I wanted to remind you and the public that our Election Day is March 3rd, next Tuesday already, and it's for Councilor in District 1 and Councilor in District 3. Our candidate, our candidate in District 1 is Cynthia Ann Bedison, and our candidate in District 3 is Jose A. Ray Jr. The last day for early voting at City Hall is this Saturday from 10:00 to 6:00 p.m. So we'll be open only for voting on, at City Hall this Saturday. Election Day, March 3rd, will be at the Women's Club, and I encourage everybody in District 1 and 3, come out and vote. Thank you.
Any questions about Ms. Mackey? This might be a rhetorical question, but will there be something in the paper showing people where their district is, the two districts that are being voted in?
I wasn't planning to do that. I have been doing public service announcements on the radio, and I had advertised in the Daily Press that, you know, it's early voting time, it's absentee time, and Election Day is March 3rd for Districts 1 and 3, but I haven't published a map. But they can certainly go to the townofsilvercity.org website to see a council district map. They can stop in at City Hall. I've got a big one right by the voting place.
TownofSilverCity.org, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Councilor Bedison?
I believe that the council district is located on the voter registration page. So they can go to the Secretary of State's website, which I can't remember off the top my head. It's SOSR, NMSOS or something like that. They can look up Secretary of State's website and they can go view their voter registration. And they can see what council district they're in if they have any questions.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Brown, any other report?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public hearings. Item 9, which is approval/disapproval of a request for an alteration of property boundaries of lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 6, Rio Vicente subdivision, and a partial subdivision vacation of lots 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12, and part of lots 13, 14, and 20, Block 6, Agave Circle and Agave Place, Rio Vicente subdivision, Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico. The applicant is Bruce McKinney of Estranza Hills LLC. The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I as Mayor... The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I, as mayor, will be the presiding officer. The town staff shall present a brief synopsis of the application based on the application or actions taken below. Then the proponent of the application shall present his or her case. Next will come witnesses in support of the proponent's case. The proponent, staff, or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the proponent if that concludes his or her case in chief, and will state that the proponent and his or her witness shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the appeal/disapplication. Following the close of the proponent's case, witnesses in opposition to the proponent's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witness may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is curative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. Have any members of this hearing board had exhortative discussions with any persons regarding the subject matter of this hearing, or had any communications from any party to this case?
No, sir.
No, sir.
All council members responded in the negative. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony or who will be available for questioning, please come to the position right in front of our town clerk, Ms. Mann-Mackey, so that you can be sworn in. If you have not been sworn, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing. I'd like to emphasize that if there's anybody here who would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this matter, you must be sworn in now in order to participate. Ms. Mackey?
Ladies and gentlemen, your good afternoon. I state your name.
I am Jamie Endic.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
I solemnly swear
that the testimony I'm about to give
that the testimony I'm about to give
in the matter before this council
in the matter before this council
is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth
is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth
under penalty of perjury. Thank you.
For the record, only the proponent and the staff member have been sworn in. Will the staff member please present the application? Identify yourself for the hearing board's consideration.
Good morning, evening. We are in council. My name is Jamie Endic. I'm the Community Development Director for the Town of Silver City. This is the final vacation phase of the Rio Vicente subdivision, and the page that I would like you to look at first is labeled Sketch in your packet. And you will see the fine dotted lines. Those are the lot lines that currently exist and that will be vacated with this procedure. The three lots on the top were sold after the 1980s when this subdivision was developed. Mr. McKinney does not own those, and those three property owners have signed the plat that the mayor will sign if this is approved after the meeting. So those property owners have been involved, and they have already signed off. So this was supposed to be a manufactured housing subdivision that was platted in the 1980s. It was never developed. Mr. McKinney is not the original owner. He has only owned it since 90s?
2004.
2004. So he was not responsible for any of the original plating. He has decided that it would be easier for him to use the property if he just vacated the original subdivision and began with something new. You'll remember in 2017, we vacated a larger portion, and Mr. McKinney has posters that we can bring up if you'd like to see them. This part we left by itself because it did involve the other three property owners that had purchased part of the original subdivision. Any future development on these parcels, any new subdivisions, will have to be in compliance with the current land use code. So the development process will start from scratch. This plat will be vacated. It will be filed with the county clerk stating that it's vacated, and any new development has to meet today's development standards, and it would go through the complete development process. PNM, New Mexico Gas and Quest have all signed off. They do not have any problem with this vacation. No departments within the town had any problems with this vacation. And if you'll flip back over to the drawing that says Plat of Survey in your packet, you'll notice that the three lots on top, that's how they'll remain, they will no longer have the Agave Circle and Agave Place further down, that would be south on the plat, will also be vacated. The top Agave Circle, the portions that lie on lots 3, 2, and 1, will revert to those owners, and those are the three owners that have signed off. The Town Utilities and Public Works Department have also reviewed this. There are no utility lines within those. That, I recommend that this plat be vacated, and on your staff report, you have the approval criteria in Section 6219 of the Land Use Code. This will be a partial vacation. It also calls for an alteration of property boundaries, and that is because of the cul-de-sac that will revert to those three property owners. So you may vacate or partially vacate if you find that it's unlikely the subdivision will be developed as reflected on the final plat. Two, the vacation or partial vacation will not result in denial of access to any parcel offering legal access through streets. And those three developed properties have access off Sotol, and they already have homes on them, and they access through Sotol Street. Number three, the vacation or partial vacation of the plat is reasonable to protect the health, safety, and general welfare. The town council shall not vacate or partially vacate if it will adversely impact the rights of persons in contiguous territory. So I feel, as the Director of the Community Development Department, that this creates a clean slate for development of that area. The topography of the land would have never allowed for the subdivision to be developed as it was originally platted. It looks great on a flat piece of paper, but it's very hilly, and it would have been very hard to provide utilities to those lots as they were constructed. Now with that, I'll stand for questions.
Councilor Ray, your question?
Clarify, remember when we had that file presented in 2017, there was a concern about access, but you're saying that you're satisfied that the people living above the area will have access to their property?
Yes, ma'am. And if you'll go to the page in your packet that says Plat of Survey, you'll notice that Sotol Street is to the north.
Yes.
And that is a platted paved street that has utilities run through it. It's already in use.
Okay, it's paved and everything. Good. It wasn't a while back.
Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Endic. Who will be the representative proponent? That'll be Mr. Bruce McKinney, ISM.
Basically, I agree with what she said, and I don't have much to add, but I do want to just show you, put a little context on it, and show the before and after. So this is what the subdivision looks like now. This is, or what it looked like before 2017, when you did the first vacation. I'm sure you've all seen this before, and hopefully we'll never see it again. But then, this is basically what it looks like now. This is the area that we're vacating now. All the rest of this was vacated earlier. And so there are only four lots of the whole, this lot, this lot, this lot, and this lot. That's the only thing left of the subdivision that isn't developed that I own. And so mainly, we just have a lot of big, open, raw space left if this is approved. And, yeah. Anyone else? And so basically, we're just, we're not doing anything. We're undoing something. And so, so before this started, I had 214 lots. If you approve this tonight, I'll have 10 lots, 10 parcels, most of them large. So I hope that you will approve it, and I'm ready to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from Mr. McKinney? Thank you, Mr. McKinney.
Thank you.
Since no one else was sworn in, I don't think there's any proponents or anyone opposed to this public hearing. Is that your assumption too, Mr. Scavron?
Yes. You still have your independent choices to make, but the case is now completely
Do you want me to go through the?
Well, at this point, you could entertain a motion and then discuss it among yourselves.
Okay. Are there any members of the hearing board that has any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
Is the hearing board prepared to consider the application and render your decision?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ray? Councilor Ray?
Or is it Councilwoman?
It's that side of, I don't get it.
That's mine. Okay. I move to approve of a request for an alteration of property boundaries of lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 6, Rio Vicente subdivision, and a partial subdivision vacation of lots 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12, and part of lots 13, 14, and 20, Block 6, Agave Circle and Agave Place, Rio Vicente subdivision, Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico. The applicant is Bruce McKinney of Estranza Hills LLC.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilwoman Madison. Have to say the rest of that, right?
Yeah, I think that we have to appoint, Mr. Scavron, we have to do the approval criteria, or can just the motion as stated be?
No. The motion?
And if you had any questions to Jamie about asking what's the criteria that she based her staff recommendation on, that would be appropriate.
But we don't have to say, I thought we would have.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? Councilor Connaught?
I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Madison?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Mackey.
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Councilor Bay?
Aye.
Councilor Edith Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Madison?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Next on the agenda is new business. 11A under new business is the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2020-06, a resolution declaring as nonessential a partial of unimproved real estate located at 2830 Little Walnut Road, Silver City, New Mexico. Ms. Endic, you're gonna present this resolution?
Yes, sir. Good evening again, Mayor and council. We've had an application to purchase a piece of property that the town owns on Little Walnut Road, and so this would be the very first step in making that available for sale. All town-owned property within town limits is assumed to be essential unless the council declares it nonessential through this process. You will notice in your packet that there's a survey attached and a legal description with a remainder tract and a roadway dedication tract. The town has already surveyed and retained, will retain if it does sell a portion for expansion of Little Walnut Road. We obtained this property several years ago, and we retained what we needed. The utilities director, the town manager, and the public works director did not have any future needs for this piece. Mr. Kurt Ashton has applied to purchase it. He is in a joint venture and would use it for residential property. Circumstances of the sale, we do not have any future plans for this piece of property. The town could acquire other needed property or receive funds from the sale of the property for other projects. At this time, I do not see any disadvantage in declaring this nonessential. It also does not mean that the town has to sell this property. It just means that we're open to beginning the process. The responsibilities, the town has taken the opportunity to retain the land needed for future development of the roadway. There's not a future municipal use for this property other than that. Relationship to plans for development, the property is situated on the top of the hill and has been previously used as a residential property. When the town acquired it, there was a multi-section manufactured home on the property. Because of the size and location, residential use is appropriate. Chapter 3 of the Town of Silver City Comprehensive Plan states, even where lots are already built out with homes and other structures and older residential areas, there are infill opportunities for infill development. This would allow reuse of a residential lot within the town limits and within walking distance of downtown and Jose Barrios Elementary School. Opinion and review of the application and verification of the information provided, the Community Development Department found the project to be beneficial to reuse a vacant residential lot within the town limits. This is the first project that we've had of this nature, so you may have a lot of questions, so I brought the entire file. I did include the appraisal that Mr. Ashton provided with his application, and you'll have Resolution 2020-06 for this project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Do I hear a motion? Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve of Resolution Number 2020-06, a resolution declaring as nonessential a partial of unimproved real estate located at 2830 Little Walnut Road, Silver City, New Mexico.
Thank you. Second, Councilwoman Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I second the motion as stated.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Mackey.
Councilwoman Madison?
Aye.
Councilor Edith Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Next under 11B is the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2020-07, a resolution adopting the town's fair housing policy, citizens' participation plan, the HUD Section 3 plan, residential anti-displacement and relocation plan, and certification, and CDBG procurement policy for the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico. Ms. Mackey, you're presenting this?
Yes, ma'am. This normally is our five annual resolutions that we do each year under a consent agenda. It changed this year. I contacted the CDBG bureau chief just to make sure our resolutions were still current. And and learned that the process changed. Now they just want one resolution with the exhibit of all those five policies attached. And in subsequent years, it's all based on whatever project we've got going on for CDBG. So if our project is still going on next February in 2021, our exhibit will only be a single page because it's still the same project. But every time we have a new project, we'll have to attach this 13-page exhibit, unless they change the process again.
Well, my counsel, this is correct for CDBG, but these resolutions also satisfy the requirements if we're doing an MFA program, which the Vista Seplata for Valhalla Henry, which would, the developer that we were working with, they will be finding, financing for those prospective property owners, which would all be under the MFA program, mostly under MFA programs. So these resolutions also satisfy those needs. So I would recommend that we adopt the entire packet every year, because that way we cover all the bases, not just with CDBG, but MFA, all the others that we work with.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion? Counsel Madison?
Thank you, mayor. I think there should be. I move to approve resolution number 2020-07, a resolution adopting the town's fair housing policy, citizen participation plan, HUD Section 3 plan, residential anti-displacement and relocation plan and certification, and CDBG procurement policy for the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Counsel Ray?
Thank you, mayor. I'll second that.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Mackey.
Counsel Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Ennis Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Canno?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is 11C, the approval slash disapproval of bid number 19/20-4 sidewalk improvement. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, counsel, two bids for this project, one from Southwest Concrete and Paving, the other one from Halo Services. This is for a downtown sidewalk project that the town has been actually engineering for the last two years. Because this project is in the downtown area, it has been very, very expensive to design, to meet all the historical requirements. And in fact, it's costed over $270,000 for design. When you look at the bid cost, the construction cost, we're talking a little, well, over 50% has already been spent on design. And so, but it is staff's recommendation to award the project to Southwest Concrete and Paving, both bid lots 1 and 2, plus gross receipts taxes for $435,784.32. The funding that the town has available right now is $403,000, and we will be putting in the remaining from operational funds that we have in the general fund.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Brown? Counsel Madison?
Mr. Brown, is it possible that after the decisions made by the council, that the map that you've provided to the council could be somehow put on the town's website so that people will know where?
Yeah, Ann's got a copy, which she can have scanned. Also, I put one on, two on the, that desk for both of the papers.
Great. I think it's just, it'd be nice for the residents to know, and for the businesses to know exactly where it's going to be done, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Counsel Ray?
Thank you, mayor. I move to approve of bid number 19-20-4, downtown sidewalk improvement for staff, through Southwest Concrete and Paving Incorporated, total project work, $403,000, no, I'm sorry,
Thank you. Is there a second? Counsel Canno?
I'll second the motion as stated.
Have a motion and a second. Any other comments or discussion from the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 11B, the approval slash disapproval of bid number 19/20-5, Ridge Road Phase 1. Mr. Brown? May I come through?
This is, the town received one bid for this project with a total amount of $1,488,526.70 plus gross receipts taxes for $1,598,968.84. The town has $802,000 in grant proceeds for this project, so it's staff's recommendation to reject the bid and go out for a bid. We reworked the bid package to decrease the size of the project and re-bid it. We also are going to have some discussions with some CES contractors on state contract right now that we've identified that we're going to have discussions with. Actually, Monday, we're going to have a discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for working so hard on this and making it work. Any questions or comments, Mr. Brown? Do I hear a motion? Counsel Ray?
Thank you, mayor. I move to disapproval of bid number 19-20-5, Ridge Road Phase 1.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If we're seconding, may I make a suggestion that must be rephrased to say, I move to approve the rejection of bid number 19/20-5, Ridge Road Phase 1, per staff recommendation, rather than doing that weird thing of disapproval, just to move to approve to reject?
I move to approve...
The rejection?
A rejection.
Of bid number...
A bid 19/20-5, Ridge Road Phase 1, per staff recommendation.
Thank you, thank you.
Second?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
Thank you. Any comments or discussions from the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item, 11E, the approval slash disapproval of notice of intent ordinance number 1289, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, Chapter 50, Section 50-2, penalty assessment, and certain provisions of the Town of Silver City traffic code. I'm the sponsor of this ordinance NOI, but I'll ask Mr. Scavron if he will give us a few more details.
Some years ago, the town, the municipal league takes the, basically the state traffic code and conforms it into an ordinance for use by various municipalities. Our previous ordinance that we adopted was in 2018, and since that time, well, at that time in 2018, the, we noticed that the penalty for virtually every offense was cut in half. And the town council at that time was concerned that, basically, traffic laws were being decriminalized. $60 penalties went down to 25, and the council decided to keep the penalty assessment code that was in effect in 2017. So while we adopted the 2018 code, we kept the penalty provisions from 2017. So rather than every year, we just adopt what the state, what the suggested UTO is, each time we would have to take steps to protect the amendments that the town has made to the code. One example is, you have to park within 18 inches of a curb. Well, we've got, you know, 12-inch curbs, curves you wouldn't be able to park. So we've made various changes. Plus, we have the ROV ordinance, which is a lot better than many other ordinances and has to be included each year. Otherwise, it would disappear impliedly by just accepting the brand-new code. So this year, it was quite confusing for a while, but we got it figured out. There's basically two main changes that we're adopting into our own code. The two main changes, one is driving intoxicated with a minor in the car. We provide, that's recited, and now there's a criminal penalty for it. And it only occurs when there's no, usually it would be if there's an accident, then you charge for having the minor in the car. But now, even if there is no accident and the minor's in the car, it's a crime. The second area, which is quite important, had to do with the parking designated disabled parking spaces. Now, the law has always been that you can't, it's against the law, both in the state and the UTO, to block a handicapped parking space. But it's been expanded. Now you can't block the spot, the parking place, the designated parking area. You also cannot block the curb cut that allows the handicapped person to enter onto the sidewalk. So for instance, and I was just talking to Alex about it, there's a handicapped spot in front of Town Hall, and just down from there is a curb cut that somebody might block. So look at the disadvantage for a handicapped person who gets out of the car in that protected spot, but can't make it up to the sidewalk because somebody's blocked the curb cut. So the curb cut now is going to be, I guess, it'll be painted blue, and blocking that curb cut will be equal to blocking a disabled parking spot. And that's the change. That's the only change in that provision. The penalty's still pretty stiff, so people that treat it lightly and go block the curb cut or block the parking spot, the designated parking spot, they're going to be facing from $250 to $500 fine, and it will be enforced.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, counsel Madison?
So, we have a lot of delivery trucks that come downtown that will park, you know, to the side of a handicapped parking spot. They will block the person that's in the handicapped spot so they can't get out. And they, I mean, I understand that we have to do deliveries, but I've been caught in that. I've been caught in inability to get out. I politely requested to the driver to please move, and they say, no, I'm delivering. And how, under this provision, would that be handled? Because we ask people, and I know that Counsel Canno will likely agree with me because she's not even here, we have a lot of people that use our handicapped parking areas as loading dumps, as weight areas, just general issues with that. And I've noticed it when I've had issues walking. So I, just the question is, is what happens when we know we have down streets, we have deliveries, you know, I know that it's kind of hard because there's different delivery drivers, to tell them that they really won't need to move aside so that that space can be used politely?
Well, I'm going to refer that to the chief.
Thank you, chief.
Can we make a comment like that, for example, for a transport officer, then? We communicate all the delivery trucks, we usually ask them to move if they are blocking that portion, and it's a violation, they can decide it. So we've had complaints in the past where we had them move their vehicles, find an alternate area to deliver. So basically, if there's a main violation and they don't move, then they'll be cited for it.
So if anyone encounters this, they would call the non-emergency dispatch number, correct? And I guess one of the things that I would hope is that they would actually move their vehicle when requested by any citizen that needs access to their vehicle or to be able to pull their vehicle out or, you know, to park. So, I mean, I understand that it would be code enforcement, but at that time, you know, as you're calling, you know, for code enforcement, they could, you know, it may not be a rapid response.
Let me clarify, code enforcement, of course, can issue this like any law enforcement can enforce it. Doesn't have to be code enforcement. Our code enforcement typically deals with those types of calls. If he's tied up, then dispatch will do dispatch another unit over there, so.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Counsel Canno?
I love that curb cuts are being included. Can we also include, I'm sure there's an official name for it, but the section between two handicap parking places that has the diagonal lines, that where a wheelchair is trying to enter to a van and put hands, if someone parks in the middle of that, then the person can't get another vehicle on either side. I don't know what they're called. I'm sure there's an official name.
It's the hash line, it's...
Yeah. That's the line.
Access file.
You know, there's a no harm.
Yeah, so there's access file.
So it's already evident.
Not to everybody.
Well, not to everybody, but the law, you can do just so much that it requires some education and some willingness to comply with logic and law.
Any other questions or comments? Chief Fatio, those deliveries are usually made around a certain time of the day, at certain times of the week. Is there any way we can have, you know, a little extra patrol during those times?
Yes, I can, yeah, with my staff, have them to monitor a little bit more closely. We've also, too, just to add, in the past, have spoken to the business owners and let them know that the issue that we have at hand with them parking in front, to try to come up with a solution to park somewhere else if we're not blocking those handicaps. But I'll pass the information down, and we'll keep a close eye on it.
Yeah, I think, once we get the message out, then, you know, maybe the problem will take care of itself, but, okay. Do I hear a motion? Counsel Canno?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the notice of intent ordinance number 1289, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, Chapter 50, Section 50-2, penalty assessment, and certain provisions of the Town of Silver City traffic code.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Counsel Madison?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Agenda item 11F is the appointment to the Historic Design Review Committee. The town receives an application from Becky Smith Ladner to continue her service on the Historic Design Review Committee, which she has served on since September 2004. The community development director highly recommends a reappointment. I have conferred with our town attorney, and he assures me that there is no conflict of interest in me recommending this reappointment. Mr. Scavron?
I agree.
If there is no objection from the council, I would like to reappoint her to the Historic Design Review Committee.
Thank you, sir.
No objections, she is hereby reappointed. Next is Agenda 12G, the approval slash disapproval to cancel the regular council meeting scheduled for March 10, 2020. Counsel Madison has requested a meeting day... Counsel Madison has requested the meeting date changed for the March 10 council meeting because she will be out of town, not only on town business, but on business of the president of the New Mexico Municipal League. There is no pending business for this date, so I'm recommending that we will approve this, this agenda item. Are there any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Counsel Madison?
I move to approve of the cancellation of the regular council meeting scheduled for March 10, 2020.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Counsel Ray? Counsel Ennis Smith?
I thought you were not in at the end, Mr. Madison. I second that.
Okay. That's all his button. You're about to...
I do not in at the end, all right. Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. This concludes the business of the Town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Counsel Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Counsel Ennis Smith? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are hereby adjourned.